Yeah, I'm working on broad. Do you get started?
Let us introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will call this school board meeting District 544. And clerk's voting take roll.
Yes, Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson. Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke. Missy Hermes, present.
Stephen Dickisla.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
And a second?
One second.
Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Our agenda is approved for the night. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Otter Elementary PTO for their donation to the One Book One School Program at Cleveland School. And thank you to the 544 Education Foundation, FM Bank, American Federal Bank, Grace Methodist Church, PEO Chapter VU Lori Whitehead, and Jenny Christensen for their donations to the Otter Closet at KSS. Does someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'll second.
Okay. Will you take roll, Missy?
Yes. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Dickisla?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thanks. All right, then we will move on to our reports, and we'll start with Kirby tonight.
Yes. Treasurers' report, our fund balance is down about $2 million. It's one of those timing things where money's, less money's coming in than going out, of course. And part of that, just a minor detail, we did receive in the trust fund of our general fund, we had $22,000 that came in from an old gymnastics fund that came through, went into the activities area for Derek, so that was a good thing. Food service continues to shine, as does community ads, so looking good on the, on the fund balance. On the bills, we went through 26 pages of bills totaling $3 million. Just over $2 million, that was paying off various bonds, whether it was for Cleveland or KSS. So that's, debt redemption was made there. And as we went through the, all of the individual payments, that time of year, again, lots of hockey officials, basketball officials, a little bit of everything there. We did have, so wrestling mat came in for $15,000, and that was a pass through from the Booster Club. And other than that, we had a couple cellos that came in, and that was also paid for by the boosters, I think.
544.
544 Foundation, that's it. And that was about it. So lots of Amazon things, nothing totally out of the ordinary. So I'll thank Renee for putting this together, and thank Melanie for coming in a little bit early and going through all these with me. Any questions?
Questions for Kirby? All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to Melanie Cole.
Region one has new directors starting this week. Last meeting was just a review of the budget and some of the staff and the regular programming that continues there, so nothing out of the ordinary with region one. Meet and confer, we'll have our first meeting for this year tomorrow. So I'll have something on that next day.
Okay. And Missy Hermes?
Okay, Policy Committee, nothing to report, but the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee met in November, and you heard Emilia Lamar's very extensive report that she shared with us the last school board meeting, and that was the main, that was really what the main meat of the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee.
Awesome. Next up is my report, and Wellness Committee has not met since our last meeting, and neither has Buildings and Grooms. I have nothing to report tonight. And Matt is going to be late tonight, so let's skip to Steve.
Staff Development met, and they just spent time discussing the programming for January's Staff Development Day. There'll be a section topics such as American Indian History and Culture, English Language Learner, Positive Behavior Intervention, Active Classrooms. There'll be a section on reading, Science of Reading for Non-Elementary Teachers, Combination, Modification, Adaptation of Curriculum Materials and Strategies. There will be one on mental illness, Suicide Prevention, Cultural Competency, and AI. So there's a full gambit of things to learn at the session. They approved about, not about, they approved $5,726 of requests, which is great to see. A number of requests, there's probably a dozen here that were approved. Some of our teachers are still being asked to present, which is, which is great to, you know, that they're in demand, that they're doing a good job, and they're being recognized as presenters in some of these conferences that they're going to. In particular, Nick Larson at the Minnesota Educators Association, he's actually going to be the head of a section for all states choir. So it's, I don't know, it's just, it's just cool to see that they're, that they're doing well enough to get recognized. And that was a pretty short meeting, so that's about all I have for that.
Any questions for Steve?
I got a question, though.
Yeah?
Could I get, I got, I get the treasurer for that, my paperwork turned around here, so if you don't mind, I can, I'm just going to redo my, what I should have said. Finance Committee did not meet, the Activities Committee did not meet. The 544 Education, we didn't meet back on November 14th. The 544 Foundation currently, the total balance, they have about $2.2 million in their funds. Fall and Winter Newsletter just got in the mail today, it's a really nice publication. So that is out as of this week. Give to the Max Day, kind of play that down a little bit because we have other fundraisers, but I think about $250 came in on that day. And doing some work on the Otter Fieldhouse Display Case. And I think other than that, and then I think afterwards, I was not at the meeting, but I think you gave the 544 Foundation Board members a tour of Lincoln. So I will, if anybody has any questions about that meeting, then Jeff would have to answer that. Next meeting for them is going to be this Thursday on the 12th, and I probably won't be there. That's my report that I was supposed to get.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and we will move on to Superintendent Drake.
All right, I'm not showing my. Good evening. So a few thank yous tonight. The first one's a little anticlimactic, unfortunately, because Matt's not quite back from his basketball commitment, but just wanted to recognize Matt Lemke for his 24 years of service to the Fergus Falls Public School District as a member of the school board, and thank him for all the great work that he's done, his undying commitment and loyalty to the school district, its staff, its students, and our community. And so with great appreciation, he will be missed, but also want to wish him well in all future endeavors that he pursues outside of his, of his employment. So want to wish him the very best. And also to Natalie Knutson for her leadership and direction and service to our students' families and community. You have also been a pleasure to work with, and your care for the people and our children, and your thoughtful nature has been just much appreciated, and you will be greatly missed as well. But we also wish you the best and look forward to the other great work you'll be doing on behalf of our community.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have a little something for you. Oh, boy. That's yours. And bring your antichrist medal. Matt, here, Matt. I know you're not here. Thank you.
So thank you again. Also want to take a moment just to thank the High School Student Council. They did a big food drive right before Thanksgiving, and raised over 1,400 pounds of food, and had over $700 of financial donations to go to help feed our community's families. And so again, this fits really, really well with our Portrait of a Graduate and our interest in service to our community, and compassion and understanding for people. So want to thank the Student Council, Mr. Tilke, and then everyone that donated to that cause. Want to talk just a little bit about some of the things going on to support student health and wellbeing. This chart happens to be from the CDC, talking about a pyramid or a foundation for supporting student mental health. This really emulates MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Support Model, which we're very familiar with also in our academics. But it starts at the bottom with some foundational pieces, looking at professional development for our staff, community engagement, and work with other organizations in the community. Then we really get into what some people might call social-emotional learning, but teaching students those positive coping skills, resiliency, problem-solving, all those kinds of pieces. And then Tier Two Intervention, there'll be an example of that coming up on the next slide. But that's where we provide some additional support and help for students that may be struggling a little bit. And then I would consider Tier Three to be more like a referral to Lakeland Mental Health for the individual therapy and those kinds of services. So the next piece is an opportunity for interested members of our community to help support student health and wellbeing. We do have the AmeriCorps Promise Fellow. We have three positions, they can be either full or part-time. We have a flexible start date, either in January or February, and so you'll be able to work with sixth through 12th grade students. You could have a caseload of as many as 30 students, but working one-to-one with students who may be struggling and helping them through their life's journey. So encourage our community to consider applying for one of those three positions. And then this slide is, it's part of our Middle School Reach Program, and it is a urban knitting project that supports mental health. And these students knit pieces, and then you can see some of them are tied around the trees throughout the community, but it's a way to, as it says, self-soothe, focus the mind, and cause anxious feelings. So wanted to give some credit to the work going on in that program and the creativity in working with students and helping them to manage issues that are coming up in their life. All right, Mr. Lemke, I'm going to reverse my slide deck a little bit. So this may sound familiar to people in the room, but this will be fresh to you. As part of our thanks, we just wanted to recognize you for 24 years of service to our community and your loyalty to the Otters and to our students and staff, and your leadership. And people probably have no idea the amount of hours Matt spends behind the scenes doing research, gathering data, providing the board and the administration with information and things to consider. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's been a pleasure working with you and wish you the very best. Thank you.
That second one looked better than the first one.
Is it all better?
Rough draft.
Thank you, Steve. The next piece I want to do is just kind of knit some things. No play on words from the pre-er's side, but knit some things together in terms of our academic work that's going on in the district. So it has to do with intentionality and a focused approach to our instruction, our data, our curriculum. And so I just want to put a few slides together. Last time, we talked about school readiness with our World's Best Workforce Report, and that we're really making strides to make sure that our students are being successful in learning those foundational skills for kindergarten in multiple areas. And so all of that data was shared with you a couple of weeks ago, and we have 88% of our students fully or partially ready for kindergarten. And then farther on was a goal in closing the achievement gaps. And so you'll see various components of our demographics and how our achievement gap compares statewide. And in almost every situation or every demographic group, our achievement gap is smaller than the state average. That's really important, that we continue to look for effective ways to close that achievement gap between those demographic groups. And then we take a look at the 2024 MCA School Comparison Data. So you have about a dozen area schools where you see a maroon cell. Those are grade levels and individual tests where our Otter students outperformed the neighboring school districts' students. And so as you see, the reading, math, and science are largely filled with maroon cells, which was what we would want. And just again, really proud of the student performance and the work of our faculty and staff. The culmination of that was that Fergus Falls students placed first in math, first in science, and second regionally in reading. Our students were 16% higher than the state average in math, 13% higher than the state average in reading, and 19% higher than the state average in science. And so this stuff doesn't, these results don't happen by accident. There is a plan in place, some of it may be behind the scenes, of work that goes on in the district to help move our, our student achievement forward. We have a curriculum review process that's both internal and external, with faculty and the curriculum director following a curriculum review cycle, where they will review options for curriculum, look at standards, alignment, et cetera. And then ultimately, that goes before a review of the DACRAT Committee, and then is adopted by the school board. With reading, we are in now our second year of the Uply Adoption Implementation and in the Hagerty Adoption and Implementation. These were both in alignment with the Science of Reading, and both were done prior to the REED Act, which, which essentially forced districts to take a look at how they were providing reading instruction and curriculum. Then under Staff Development, we have the OL and LA Training under the Science of Reading that's taking place right now in our district. And then we have a multitude of Minnesota relicensure areas that Steve reports on when we talk about Staff Development Days or we talk about sending student or teachers to various trainings. Many of those are geared towards meeting those Minnesota relicensure requirements and those 125 clock hours that, that teachers need for those license renewals. Then we look at the PLC work that's taking place, with again, making sure that our curriculum is aligned to the standards, that we have teachers engaged in curriculum mapping so that there is a scope and sequence to the instructional work that's going on. Data reviews, where we pull back and look at achievement gaps and other information that can help us pinpoint where our instruction in student learning is the strongest and also where there needs to be focus on in the future. Mentioned already, the elementary PLCs are focused on the Science of Reading. The middle school has a math focus, they did a data retreat earlier this fall. And then the high school has department-chosen focus areas that are either on curriculum, teaching strategies, or on classroom environment, for the most part. Although they had the opportunity to select their own areas and kind of combine that with an action research type of approach, where they're researching effective interventions and then implementing them in their classrooms this year. And then on the intervention side, we have the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. We call that MTSS, our Title I Program, our ATSIS Program. We added additional support with our last two-year application. And then we also shifted the supports down so that there, we have a little heavier focus in the earlier grade levels. So that's what we have done there. And then a decision to pull our Special Education Program completely under the governance of our school district. So those are some of the approaches that we've taken, kind of behind the scenes, in improving student learning outcomes. This is just a note that tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, MREA will have its proposed 2025 political platform. And so there's a link for you that was disseminated if you're interested in attending that meeting. And then a little bit of information on the budget and economic forecast that was released very recently from the department, from the state. And there are some challenges ahead. The 2026-27 projected balance is $616 million. That's $1.1 billion less than prior estimates. And then as you look at the graph with the projected fund balance moving forward for the state of Minnesota, you see that there is a projected structural imbalance coming just on the horizon here. And the reason that I bring this up is that in January, the legislative, new legislative session will reconvene. And as part of that, by the end of that session, at the end of May, we will have a new two-year agreement with our General Ed Formula, presumably increases. We're guaranteed by statute a minimum inflationary increase, so we think there will be at least a 2% built in there. But beyond that, maybe of great interest. The next budget forecast that will come out by the state will be in February, and that will have, I think, a lot of influence in shaping the results of this upcoming legislative session. So predictably, some challenges, budgetary challenges for the state looming on the very near horizon. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have the minutes from November 20. Sorry, just there. Oh, do you want to do a report?
I sure can.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, Minnesota High School League did meet December 5th, on Thursday. And so some highlights to give you of the meeting that I have here. There's a couple of things I did pass that were kind of important that are changes too for us, too. So this last summer, they did a girls' flag football. That's the kind of thing they're working with the Minnesota Vikings again. League staff is hopefully to expand that, so they're working on that part of it. One thing that I didn't know that I thought was kind of interesting is Minnesota is the first league state association to sanction adaptive athletics. Something they were recognized for. Another thing is that Form A, I don't know, do we do Form B or just Form A?
Form A only.
Form A only. Okay, so they did approve that for the $755,000, so that'll affect 297 members. And then that Form B was $385,000, and that'll be given to 134 member schools. So although our resolution did not pass the MSBA, so one thing though is that I think they did hear some grumblings from, even from other people. And so again, they approved the recommendation to hire an additional staff member who will work with communication and media with the Minnesota High School League. So hopefully that'll help members have an easier website to navigate and also be able to get additional information. So it's a step, so it's always a positive to have a step go forward. The other thing that, that was approved that does affect Fergus Falls is the amendment that includes language now that adds ninth grade into the league. And that was supported by 97.5% of the members that voted. So, so that will start next year. So that, that's a change. And one of the big things that the change does is it allows the Minnesota High School League, they have insurance that was only for 10th through 12th grade, and now that will include now ninth grade. But it does affect some of the things that Fergus has done in the past with moving of players and stuff like that for practices, and that will have to be changed or do different, or maybe we can get a variance. So that's another discussion that we have at some point in time here. So that, so they are working on that, so there will be a new handbook that will be sent out to members that will include all the updates to it. So that was probably the biggest thing that they did change. Another one that they're looking at that does affect us also, because we have IQ Academy, is online students. And I think it's dealing with participation and where, if they can participate with their home, so wherever they're located, if they can participate in within that school for their sporting activities, and how that will affect them. So that has been some discussion, and that is still having some discussions, so.
Well, it'd be interesting to see how they would, you know, monitor the grading, right? Because it's a different cat.
Yeah, correct.
We haven't seen any record of that.
No, no. So it will be interesting how this all plays out. I just know that that has been brought up before, and now they're, they have a committee put together that's looking at it, and maybe they'll have more discussion about it. So like you said, there's some difficulty with regulating it just with changes and what, what students do do within, even within a year, so. So that was kind of the main highlights of their meeting. And then their next one will not be until February will be their next meeting. They will be doing a virtual, the workshop meeting.
Really?
Yes, they will be.
Wow.
There you go. That's what I have to report.
Thank you. Okay, back to our general consent items. We have our minutes from the November 25th, 2024 board meeting, and then back to Kirby for bills and treasurers report.
Okay, just repeat everything I said before. I gave, I had my paperwork turned around, so. Any questions on the bills and treasures report?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And then on to Eli.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items here. We have Jennifer Peterson, under Certified Staff Hire. She has been an elementary acting teacher for us, and her contract is just going to be increasing to full-time starting today. And then it's for Staff Hire, Tina Sauer, Special Ed Paraprofessional, working five days a week at Lincoln School, and that's effective January 3rd. And last, I'm announcing my retirement after 30 years. And so I'll still be around for nearly five more months, so yeah, we have long goodbyes in that sense. But I want to thank each of you for working, you know, so diligently side by side with me. It's been a privilege, and just time to start a new adventure in my life. I would recommend these.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The consent items are approved. There is no old business, so on to new business. Our first item is Fergus Falls Community Arena User Agreement, and Exhibit A, Seasoned January 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2025. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Our next item is Lakeland Mental Health Center Agreements with ISD 544, effective January 1st, 2025. with I S D five forty-four effective January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. It is for three school-based mental health practitioners at Cleveland Adams McKinley and Kennedy at A L C. Um, one mental health practitioner at the Level Three Program, one mental health practitioner at Lincoln, and one at Kennedy School. Can I get a motion to approve those agreements?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. The next item is a farm lease agreement between Fergus Falls School District five forty-four and Lewin and Bev Rog- Beverly Rognis effective January first, twenty twenty-five through December first, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So move.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one?
I got a question about that. Uh, we talked about um, was it the the first, the rights of refusal and that with, did that all gets?
Yeah, there is no first right of refusal. It goes out before the public for a bid from anybody. And then the district has the option of choosing the bid that meets its needs the best.
Was there, were there more bids than this one or? Yeah? No, this is the only bid, okay.
All right, all in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. And we have a resolution on the retirement of Elaine Jenke. Whereas Elaine began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August nineteen ninety-five. And whereas Elaine has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past thirty years. And whereas Elaine has been a dedicated H R director for the district and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Elaine Jenke for her thirty years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution before it's adoption.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Missy, do you take roll?
Yes. Steven Biggison?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you so much, Elaine. Okay, um, our public meeting is at six. Do we hold until then?
Well, we can do um, we can do the levy. Yeah, we can do, well, um, we can go ahead and do the Technology Plan, Internet and Achievement Integration Plan. Um, that should bring us to six, I assume, because Jeff will be doing those two. The six P M is has to be the taxes payable.
Uh, got it.
Yeah.
All right, so we do the uh I S D five four-four Technology Plan and Internet Safety Policy Public Statement uh on an annual basis. As internet access became a well-established practice in public education, school districts have adopted technology plans for the implementation of internet access. District Policy Number Five Twenty-four. Internet Acceptable Use and Safety does govern the use of the internet for the purposes of education to include classroom activities, educational research, and professional or career development activities and uses deemed necessary for the operation of the organization. As part of this policy, the district utilizes internet content filtering software, Fortinet and Hapara to block access through the school's network to visual depictions that would be considered inappropriate or harmful. The policy also provides, though not exhaustive, guidance for the acceptable use of the internet. Policy Five Twenty-four includes guidance regarding parental technology provider notification, school-issued devices, cellphone use, screen time limitations for children in preschool and kindergarten. The most recent review and adoption of the policy took place on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And with the board's permission, I will move on to Achievement and Integration. So we also do this report to the public on an annual basis. Uh, the purpose of Achievement Integration, or A N I, uh for Minnesota program is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in Minnesota public schools. Your eligibility is based on uh meeting one of four uh criteria. Uh, we happen to meet criteria number two. We are an adjoining district, uh so we physically adjoin a racially isolated district, and that is Pelican Rapids. We have a three-year plan. It runs from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And our plan contains four goals. One integration goal, two achievement goals, and one teacher equity goal. Uh, the first one is on uh integration. And essentially what this means is that we have an agreement where we will be uh having student, direct student contact uh with students from the Pelican Rapids uh school district. And uh we also, uh, our projects involve some other local districts, in particular Underwood Public School as well. And so we uh do this joint uh effort on an annual basis. Uh, it's proven to be very effective. The kids enjoy it. Um, their uh pre and post-assessments of cultural awareness, et cetera, increase as a result of this work. And uh this is a, an update to the public that we did meet our goal uh and that uh we had cultural immersion events of the cultural fair and Spanish Heritage Month uh that we did uh with those districts. So we are on track in having met that goal. Uh, the next two goals are both achievement goals. And they're tied to our work in closing the achievement gap uh gap between uh those students eligible for uh free or reduced lunches and those uh that are not eligible for free and reduced lunches. Uh, the first goal is tied to reading proficiency. And so our goal was to reduce the achievement gap uh between those two demographic groups two percent per year over the next three years. Uh, so our target um this year was seventeen percent. And we actually narrowed the achievement gap to sixteen percent. So uh we did meet our goal. Uh, this school year, our goal will be to reduce it to fifteen percent. And then the following year, reduce it down to thirteen percent. We also had a uh reduction in the achievement gap. Again, same demographics, free and reduced lunch uh students versus non-free and reduced lunch. Uh, this school happened to be in the area of math. And so our uh goal was to again decrease the achievement gap by two percent per year to get that down to twenty percent in um the school year twenty-four, eighteen percent, and then sixteen percent. Uh, we did hit our goal of narrowing it down uh from twenty-two percent uh in the prior year down to twenty percent uh in this, in uh school year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. So we met our goal there. And then the last uh goal under the Achievement and Integration uh program had to do with teacher equity. And this is increasing our own uh knowledge of uh culturally appropriate curriculum and instructional practices and pedagogy. Uh, we wanted to ensure that um our administration and faculty uh received the training and that uh we did meet our goal of having greater than ninety percent of all teaching staff and administration complete the cultural competency training during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we have phase two of that training that will be taking place uh later on this school year. So uh that is the uh Achievement and Integration uh presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you, can you define pedagogy?
Uh, instructional practice and curriculum, yep.
I have a little song to dance now. Five more minutes.
Well, Renee's been practicing. All right, thank you.
Hey, as long as we got a minute, let's see your presents. Yeah, come on, yeah.
You want a squash stone?
I don't think so.
A bronze apple? Aw, that's neat.
Well, that is very nice.
Very cool.
Time of bell rings. School more than birthday experience.
Thank you.
That's actually what it says.
I think you had it memorized. There you go.
See? There you go. Hearts.
Yeah, they have uh.
Yeah.
Got some children that'll.
You can go hang out for the Salvation Army and bring them home.
He's got his own gear. He shows up with the video.
Very cool.
More cowbells, yeah, there you go.
And they're really nice quality, so that's. They are. They're really nice. They're heavy.
Yeah, they're heavy.
Yeah. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You can do dumbbell curls if you need.
Used to be six oh one, and then they changed to six. Yes, it used to be six oh one.
What was the point of that?
I don't know. Had the after six P M, so it was six oh one.
Because all activities are supposed to be done by then as well?
I don't know. I don't really know. I, it's just a rule, was a rule. They changed it.
Matt, when you said uh waiver first Minnesota State High School League, you think because we're a smaller school?
Yeah, I think it's, it's just because of gym space. So there's a provision in it in the Minnesota High School League when their policies is that basically they don't allow any um seventh and eighth grade students to practice with like your ninth grade group eighteen.
Okay.
And so, but we've done that for the past fifteen years because we're so limited in gym space. And we have seasons that cut in half. Like a lot of our activities cut in half. And so that's where I'm talking about trying to get a variance from them because they're not playing with them, they're just practicing because of. And you know, it's been a policy or procedure of us trying to get kids home by six o'clock. And not having them practice after six. And this is kind of defeating that purpose because now all of a sudden, all those students are gonna have to practice after six because you have to have a separate practice for them, which means they gotta go late. And so it just seemed to me that's, you know, we're not the only school district in this. And then you think of the smaller one A schools that have limited students in general. And I'm sure they bring seventh and eighth graders up to practice. So I just think it's something that the Minnesota High School League's gotta look at and entering some form of variance on that, just the practice part. I mean, if you're actually on the um, on the actual like game sheet or whatever or that, that's different. And of course, you're not going to be able to. Their biggest issues, they just don't want them to play with uh, let's say, ninth grade squad.
Yes.
And then play in a tournament, an eighth grade that's and tournaments afterwards or something during the season. Is that, so. Anyway, I'm just hoping we can just get that word practice either removed or get a variance somehow. Just because of, I mean, that's the basis. We've been two failed bond referendums here this year. And that would have provided additional, one of this, one of the prompt. There would be additional gym space, so.
So Matt, we have a region where ballot there for you to do. Yeah, so.
Just don't throw your bells at me, no.
No ringers?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Truth and Taxation Hearing. Uh, this is our annual meeting that we're required to have by statute in order to review our budget as well as the proposed levy before we adopt the final levy. Uh, so tonight, um, first off, we'll start out with the budget. And this is the budget that we adopted in uh June this year. It's our fiscal year twenty-five budget. And I should also, also mention that this is just a high-level overview of most things because a lot of this we've already reviewed in the last six months. And so if you do have any questions, let me know. But otherwise, this is just a high-level summary. Uh, here is um a chart showing our fiscal year twenty-four actual budget on the left-hand side in the yellowish-brown color. And this is actually what our auditor has reviewed with us about a month ago. It's the twenty-four results, so um you can see there the, on the left-hand column, it's by fund. It's the general fund, food service fund, community service, building construction, and debt reduction. Uh, so we have the beginning fund balances for fiscal year twenty-four, the revenues that came in, expenditures that went out, and then our ending funding ban, fund balances as of June thirtieth. Um, so that's fiscal year twenty-four. So um, and that's um what the auditors had just reviewed. So on the right-hand side in the blue is our fiscal year twenty-five budget. This is what was adopted in June. Uh, revenues overall are forty-eight million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. Uh, projected expenditures are forty-nine million, five hundred and fifty-two, one hundred and fifty-eight. And so then the ending projected fund balance is twenty million, eight hundred and fourteen, nine seventy-one. And that's all fund balances combined. And I should mention that we will um be having some expenditures in the building construction fund for fiscal year twenty-five since that project was not completely closed out and invoiced as of June thirtieth. So we will see some expenditures there even though um there's a zero in for the budget. Um, all of the details for this budget can be seen on our website. If there's any questions on that, let me know as well. And so the next couple of slides, I will take a look at the high-level summary for the general fund revenues and expenditures for our budget. Um, so first of all, we've got revenues. Um, projected revenues are forty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight. For uh, this is given as general fund for fiscal year twenty-five, which is our current budget year. Uh, the blue portion on this circle represents um our funding from the state. So you can see that this makes up about eighty percent of our revenue. Uh, the portion in yellow is our uh local tax levy. So we will be getting about four million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand uh in revenue from tax levies for a general fund. Um, other sources on here is about seven percent. And then federal uh sources make up about one percent of our revenue. Um, next slide here is a pie chart showing our rev, our general fund expenditures um by category or by type. And so in the orange there, we have salaries and wages, this is fifty-two percent. Uh, employee benefits is split out separately. This is about fourteen percent. Uh, purchased services is the green section, that's about twenty-seven percent. Uh, purchased services makes up our transportation, uh also I Q online services that we pay out. It also includes contractors for electrical and miscellaneous building projects um as well as property insurance and other things like that. Supplies and materials uh represents the blue portion. Uh, this includes custodial and H B A C supplies and materials as well as classroom and curriculum supplies and materials. Then we have about two percent of capital expenditures. And this includes the payments that we're making on the Target building that we purchased for Lincoln School. Uh, it also includes technology and other equipment. And then we do have a small slipper in there for other expenditures for about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Okay, so that's the levy, or I mean, sorry, the budget. Next, we'll talk about the levy. And levy will be, the levy that we're talking about now will be the proposed levy going forward. So this will be what you and I pay in our taxes for fiscal, you know, in calendar year two thousand twenty-five. And it will be the school district's revenues for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, so starting in July of next year. So who sets the taxes or how are they set? This is a little bit different for school districts than what it is for cities and counties. Um, in school districts, a lot of our taxes are basically um based off of formulas that is, that are set by the Minnesota Legislature. And so if you go onto M D's website, you can print a report called the Levy Limitation and Certification Report for each school district. It's thirty-nine pages of um data and formulas, so it's really good reading material. And it's formulas for things such as the general ed, operating. And it's formulas for things such as the general ed, operating capital, career and technical, reemployment, community education, long-term facilities maintenance, lease levy, and so forth. And so all, there's, there's formulas for many, many different things. And so the formulas, like I said, are all based on Minnesota Legislature. And so those are things that we really don't have much say over. And so the things that we do have say over would be things such as the voter-approved operating referendums or building bonds. And so just to stress again that school districts have very limited decision-making authority when it comes to property tax levies in comparison to other governmental agencies such as cities and counties. Here's a chart showing our levy. So this is current levy and proposed levy. So our current levy is $8,459,503. And you can see how it's split out there by general fund versus community service and then debt service. Proposed levy for this upcoming year is actually a reduced amount from that. It's $8,297,830. It represents about a 1.9% decrease. And so of the 8.3 million, about 4.7 million of that would go into the general fund. $237,000 would go into the community service fund, and about 3.3 million would be used to pay our debt. And then at the bottom of the table here, you can see that it gives us a tax rate of approximately 17.18%, down from about 17.93%. I should just mention here too that this levy is what we had set in September, so there's no changes in that. So what does this mean for our taxpayers? It means that if you own an average home value, which is currently about $250,000 in Fergus Falls, your current taxes are about $777 for the school district portion. And next year, we do would see about a decrease of about $54. And then if you own, let's say, a $500,000 home, you'd see a decrease of about $82. That is, though, is if all other factors stayed the same. So if your property didn't change in value, if the district's property didn't change in value, if all other factors remained exactly the same, which we know they won't, that's what you would see for your decrease. Here's a chart showing the history of the levy. The levy itself is the blue column here, so you can see the slight reduction here for this year compared to last year. It also shows an adjusted net tax capacity, which is the orange column. So this really represents our tax capacity for the district, which is based on our property values. And so you can see how these values have been rising pretty steadily over the last few years. And then if you take the numbers in the blue divided by the numbers in the orange, that's how we get our tax rate of the 17.18%. And so you can see over the last 10 years, this has gradually been coming down. Next, we'll talk a little bit about some factors affecting your levy. One of the things is the property in the overall district. And so this kind of represents those orange bars that we just saw on that chart. So the property is based on all the different values, whether they're residential, agricultural, commercial, and so forth. And so it's all those different values and whether or not they're going up or down. And so the wealthier a district is, the more we pay in levy and the less we receive in aid. And so all of those different formulas on that levy report of 39 pages, a lot of those formulas have utilization factors. And so it means that we're going to be, some of that revenue is going to come in the form of levy and other portion of it's going to be in the form of aid. And so the wealthier a district is, the more we will be paying as a levy and the less we'll receive in aid. Another thing that affects levies is your individual property value. And so this really is your portion of the pie. If you make major improvements to your home or if the county otherwise sees that your value should go up significantly, that's your individual piece of the pie. And you might see a slightly larger increase in proportion to, let's say, your neighbor. So that's another factor. Another thing, as we talked about earlier, is the legislative changes to all those formulas. Of course, our enrollments play a big role in it. If we have higher numbers in enrollment, we will get more revenue in the form of levy and aid. And likewise, if enrollment drops, the revenue goes down as well. And then also, every year when we do run the levy report, there's lots of different adjustments for previous years. So MDE goes back three years, and, and all the different formulas, they are finally, finalizing numbers from the previously three years. And so every year in our levy report, we're going to see adjustments. And some are going to be positive and some are going to be negative. And so those will also affect our upcoming levy. And then finally, there are some local decisions as well as requirements that will affect the levy as well. Here's a chart showing how our taxes compare for that average home market value gain of $250,000. We said your taxes for the current year would be about $777. And you can see if you were a resident of Pelican Rapids, Underwood, Detroit Lakes, or Breckenridge, you'd be paying slightly less than that. And if you were a resident of West Central Area, Campbellton, Ashby-Moorhead, or Rossing, you'd be paying slightly more than that. So we're kind of in the middle in, in regards to the, some of the other school districts in our area. And so just to summarize, or again, our final levy that I would ask you to adopt tonight was $8,297,830. And after that's complete, then I can certify it to the county auditor, submit it to the Department of Revenue, and also certify it with MDE. Any questions?
Questions, Renee?
I think just a statement on the budget part of it, just that's, I think, unique to schools is that 66% of our budget goes to people.
Oh, yes, it is. It's a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's different than cities and counties in that part of it. It's that we have, we're people business, and so.
Yes.
A lot of money goes towards people.
High service organization.
I think, I think another thing to make note of is that we have an annual budget of about $49 million. This is only $8.3 million of that, so it's about 17%. So the other 83% is funded by, primarily by the state, MDE, and a little bit from the feds on the stretch lead side. So this is, it's an important part of our taxes, of our operating levy, but the operating levy is only a portion, a small portion, compared to what we get from the state.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
All right, so our next item to approve then is the levy for taxes cabled 2025 for $8,297,830.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. Next, we're going to be going into a closed session as per Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 0.3 to discuss the school board evaluation of Superintendent Drake. Can I get a motion to approve or to close our meeting? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Meeting ends.